Turn on my microphone here. This is meeting come to order. This is the TK, City of TK City Council Meeting, Monday, March 19th, 2018. Will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council's gonna stand for a moment of silence. You're welcome to join us if you'd like. Thank you, please be seated. Item number one, our special presentations. Is Eagle Scout Christopher Putman here? I'm assuming that's that row back there. Is that four? Congratulations, quite an honor.
I believe I've been in the program for thirteen years now, so awhile.
And how long does it take to just earn the Eagle Scout portion?
So my Eagle Scout project consisted of the work period, the planning period, about two months, three months, but to get up to the rank of Eagle Scout and to go over the ranks of Boy Scouts, it took awhile, ever since I was ten and a half, so eight years.
Wow, that's quite an accomplishment. Well, let me read the proclamation recognizing you as Eagle Scout. Whereas Christopher Putman has proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas it takes many years of dedication and commitment to achieve Eagle Scout rank, and whereas Eagle Scouts act as leaders and role models in the community, and whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown, and whereas citizens of the City of TK appreciate his hard work and his hard work to raise funds, purchase and install ten bike racks at the local parks, including the Beach and Swim Center, Windjammer, Rundy, Windsong, Turner, and Pitt Karen Parks. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the City of TK do hereby congratulate and recognize Christopher Putman for his achievement toward the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud of him as a member of our community. Signed this nineteenth day of March, 2018. Congratulations. Parents wanna come up here for a picture? Parents, parents? Thank you. All right, get one with him and then we get the dolphin. All right? All right, get one with just them. All right, the second item is a proclamation recognizing Spring Pickup Week, Spring Pickup Whereas April 21st through April 28th is Spring Pick Me Up Week in the City of TK, and whereas in celebration of Earth Day, the city recognizes the outstanding collaboration and efforts of Keep America Beautiful Palmetto Pride, Keep New, Keep York County Beautiful, City of TK staff and volunteers to coordinate and execute Spring Pick Me Up Week, and whereas the city will offer reduced costs for items requiring a disposal fee in addition to daily, free daily curbside pickup of yard debris, small household items, and whereas the kickoff starts at 9:00 AM at Trailhead Park on Saturday, April 21st for the citywide cleanup. There you will receive instructions and supplies culminating with a picnic lunch at noon at Windjammer Park, and now therefore I, David O'Neil, Mayor of City of TK, do hereby proclaim April 21st through the 28th, 2018 as Spring Pick Me Up Week in the community, and I call upon all citizens to join in the efforts of city staff to volunteer to support Spring Pick Me Up Week dated 19 March, 2018. Tim Gillett, just come and pick this up. Did you wanna say anything? No? I know Tim, he doesn't wanna speak. You can catch him on his YouTube channel later tonight, though. All right, item number three is a proclamation honoring Vietnam veterans, which we have one in the audience today for sure. Do we have any other Vietnam veterans here? Just AC? All right, whereas over three million Americans served through more than a decade in the Vietnam War and more than 58,000 did not return, and whereas of those who survived, over 300,000 suffered physical injuries in combat, and even greater number developed post-traumatic stress, PTSD, and other psychiatric ailments as a result of their service, and whereas our veterans answered our country's call and served with honor, and on October, on April 30th, 201975, get this right, the last of our troops left Vietnam, and whereas we reaffirm one of our fundamental obligations to show all who have worn the uniform of the United States the respect and dignity they deserve, and to honor their sacrifice by serving them as well as they serve us, and now therefore I, David O'Neil, Mayor of the City of TK, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 2018 as Vietnam Veterans Day in this community, and I call upon all citizens to join me in paying tribute and honor, and honoring their proud legacy with our deepest gratitude. Signed dated this nineteenth day of March, 2018. Chuck from the TK Veterans Association, come on up. Please come on up. Andrew, can you hear this? Okay, you got the thumbs up, thanks a lot. Go ahead and put that in our cabinet. We have a veterans cabinet right outside here, we're gonna put that in there probably in the next fifteen or twenty minutes. And just for your own information, AC will be our grand marshal, thank you, brain freeze, of the Fourth of July Parade this year, that's quite an honor. There you go, AC. Did that light go off? Now, we can still hear you. Wanna get somebody to open that door in there? Get a complaint filed against us. Okay, the next item is proclamation for the TK Women's Club to the TK Police Department. Sue Galaski, would you like to come forward?
The Women's Club, this is our president, Marie J. Hill, and I'm the treasurer, I've got all the money. The Women's Club would like to accept the police department with a check for $500 to have the firemen, I mean, we already did the fire department, have the police department and the police's prayer engraved on the walk in front of the police department.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
We're very good.
We also have a resolution for the law enforcement assistance and supporting agreements. Is that next?
That's towards the end.
That's towards the end?
Yeah.
All right, the next one is a presentation by the South Carolina Human Affairs Commission. Sandra Ligon, Senior Consultant.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, friends, neighbors. My name is Sandra Ligon, I bring you greetings from the South Carolina Human Affairs Commission. That is a state agency that was created in 1972 under the Governor John C. West. It was created during a time in South Carolina's history when there was turbulence going on around the state, there was in Lamar, South Carolina, the parents were turning over school buses because of segregation, at South Carolina State University, there was the shooting at the bowling alley, and down in Charleston, there was problems with the workers at the MUSC, so the governor decided he needed to make a proclamation or law into place where people of different races could get together and work out their issues and their problems. So thus came the South Carolina Human Affairs Commission. Our first commissioner was George Hamilton, he is now a minister down in the Dorchester County area, and our commissioner today is Mr. Ray Buxton, and Mr. Williams here serves on our Board of Commissioners. We're here today because part of our mission, in addition to solving fair housing issues and employment discrimination complaints based on race, sex, age, national origin, disability, and religion, and employment and complaints dealing with public accommodations, we also have a Community Relations Division, and that's where Yvette and I are. We work in the Community Relations Division, creating Community Relations Councils in all forty-six counties. That is a mandate that was put into our law back in 1972, that we are to create these councils, that we now call Community Relations and Development Councils. We have a consultant with the College of Charleston that helped us put together this manual on how to create a council, step by step, all details on how to create a council, how to plan your meetings, how to work with the community. So we have evolved from being, talking about race, issues like that, to quality of community life, that's what, that is our emphasis right now, quality of community life. We like for everyone in the community to feel that they are part of the community, we like for everyone in the community to feel like they have a place to go in case they have concerns or problems or issues, and so that's where we come in. We offer these, we offer to set up these councils in different parts of the state. Right now in York County, there is a very active council in Rock Hill, so that just serves the Rock Hill area. So we try to get them through county councils, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, like in Little Beach, there's one in Little Beach, but not Ori County, so you know, that one's has been around for a long time. So we do have about twenty active councils, and we're here today to find out if we can partner with a group that you already have here in TK, or if we can get a memo of understanding where we could have a council here. There's no money involved, we do all the training, and we would ask each council member to recommend maybe two or three people from their particular district or area that would be good to serve on the council. Be glad to answer any questions that you have at this time, or anything related to this, I know it's kind of a snapshot of what we do, but you know, I only have only twelve minutes, so I just wanted to make it brief.
All right, anybody have any questions?
No, mine do not.
Not right now.
Not at this time, but thank you for coming in.
Thanks, we'll digest this information, I appreciate you coming out.
I wanna make a note that I did bring little gifts for everybody, just information when you're sitting around, yes, there you go, at your leisure, watching the game tonight, you might wanna read through the bag and see, sir, do you, do I have your permission to maybe contact you later on and see if you have any questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
You go through my personal secretary, AC, right there.
Thanks again, we appreciate it, such a little place.
Billy, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, item two is public comments. Do we have any public comments today? I didn't have a list. No public comments. Yes, we have public comments. Please state your name and address, and the young lady who's with you?
Yes.
Can you tell me who that is, too?
Yes. Good afternoon, thank you, I am Elizabeth Duda, I live at 1081 Palmira Drive. This is Josie Duda, she also lives at 1081 Palmira Drive.
Hadn't found her own place yet, huh?
So, thank you, we are here to talk about the survey that's out open right now, we want to make sure that the community understands there's a short-term rental survey open right now to TK residents as well as anyone with an internet connection. We want people to understand that they're, they can be giving feedback on that, on short-term rentals and whether they're right for TK, for residential TK. We have had experience with short-term rentals in residential TK, and we are confident that they are not right for residential TK based on our past experience. So back in 2007, 2008, the community worked together with the Planning Commission and the City Council to discuss changing the ordinances in order to ban short-term rentals. I know that the medium has changed today, so now we have VRBO and Airbnb, but the issues remain the same as back in 2007, 2008. Specifically, you're all aware, TK homes are relatively close together, we have shared driveways, there are many communal properties, these include waterfront properties, green spaces, and much of the street numbering is convoluted and confused, so people get lost, you're aware, well, so when vacation renters and short-term renters are lost in our neighborhood or partying outside, or their flop house resident next door is bumming a cigarette in your yard, the neighbors are affected in TK, so our community, the way that it's structured is not right for short-term rentals. TK residents moved here to live in a safe residential community, but resident, but short-term rentals attract transients with, transients with no vested interest in our community, and they potentially threaten that safety that we expect here in TK, and that we're known for, you know, that we are on lists saying that we're, that one of the safest cities in the United States and in South Carolina, so that would be threatened if we opened it up to short-term rentals in our residential community. Before we worked together to change the ordinance, we found that short-term rental properties attracted people who wished to party, this resulted in noise, foul language, intoxication, trash, and property damage, and I have many neighbors, some of whom are here today, who can tell you these stories. Strangers were regularly lost in our neighborhood, they were driving into our driveways, they mistakenly parked in our driveways and at our houses, and this was alarming to our families and to the elderly residents. Unable to resolve concerns with the short-term renters, residents had to call the police. This stressed the residents, we don't wanna call the police on neighbors, and this also tapped police resources that could be better used elsewhere. Partiers who parked on the street prevented the passage of fire trucks. More than once when my husband was out of town, and I was pregnant and returning home at night with my one-year-old child, I was scared to find a strange car parked in our driveway and no one outside. Why do people support short-term rentals in TK? If it's because you want less regulation, please focus on eliminating ordinances that we do not need. TK needs this ordinance to protect people, property values, and property values. If you want the freedom to do what you want with your house, do what you want if you're not encroaching on your neighbor's freedom. Operate a business in a business district not out of a home, not in the residential neighborhood. Finally, I'll point out the survey's flawed, it's open not just to the public, and it's open to the public and not just TK residents, so VRBO, HomeAway, and Airbnb employees from outside of TK, including in Russia, can take the survey to express their support.
Ma'am, Liz, your time is up, we understand what you're saying, we get it, it's very well-written, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Do we get six minutes? Cause we're two people.
If she wants to read it, she can. Does she wanna try it?
I didn't sign off, but I'm gonna say a few words, I miss, I've never allowed full words, but here I am.
Please state your name.
I'm Marie J. Hill, President of the Women's Club. My neighbors and myself have been talking about this short-term rental, and one of my neighbors who's sitting back there tonight brought up a couple of very interesting points. He said, a lot of thieves, when they want to steal stuff, they move into neighborhoods, they don't need a lot of time to know what houses are open, who goes to work, who doesn't go to work, so you can set yourself up for this, and also the problem with young children, same idea with these people, they'll know who's coming home, who doesn't have anybody home, and things like this, and then you have a lot of, our HOA agreements do not allow short-term rentals, like Callaway, they're very, very, very strict, so from my point of view, it would be something that I would think is not desirable for the community. And I've talked to a lot of people lately, and we all come up with the same idea, we didn't buy a home to have a stranger next door for just a short period of time.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Bill Barone, 203 and Outaway, I live next door to Marie, but this has nothing to do with that, this is a lighter note. I'm not sure, this is my first meeting, I'm not sure how certain things occur, but the paving of Gardendale Road, whether it was the town, the state, a tremendous improvement, I can now sit in my backyard, and I thank you.
Ryan Richard did that.
Yeah, that was all me. Next time you do anything, just give me a shout, shoot me a text, be taken care of right
Anybody else? Going once, going twice, all right, public comments are closed. Next item is item number three, approval of minutes. Council, do you have any additions, subtractions, changes to the minutes? Hearing none, they stand. Item number four, committee appointments. City Manager.
Well, believe it or not, we don't have to do any revotes.
Wow, that's, I figured.
Got it all through on the first time. Council, I'll read off the names for each, and if we can get a motion to maybe accept as read, may speed things up a little bit. For Planning Commission, it was Chris Leonard, Larry Franklin, Vincent DeRosier, and Tom Fogerty. Do you want me to read them all, or do you wanna just do committee, do them all? Okay. For Boza, Jim Arany, and if I am messing up these last names, I do apologize. Building Codes, Bart Dyer, Chris Eckert, Randy Minnick, and Todd Baker, and TK Forever, Cynthia Strigle, and Lanell Morgan.
And what's the last one, Morgan?
Lanell Morgan.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept all commission appointments?
I have a motion to accept all commission appointments, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments from the gallery? Any comments from council? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Very good. Item number, uh, let's see, item number five, I gotta get new glasses, unfinished business. Two A, get this set up real fast. Five A. Is the Planning Commission here to do this, or you want me to do it?
It's the second read, so it's straight to council.
Do I have to read the whole executive summary?
No, sir.
Good.
If you wanna summarize it, if you wanna summarize the summary, that's fine, or...
This is the Planning Commission's recommendation to amend Ordinance 77, Article 8, Section 19.401, Regarding Fences in Residential and Park Districts. Council approved the first reading at the February 20th council meeting, and we now request approval of the second reading of the amended ordinances. I'll hear your motion. Oh.
Is there any comments allowed on the buses?
We will get to that, you'll be next. Sorry?
You gotta get a motion.
Okay.
Call for a motion.
Yeah, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the second reading of the amendment to Ordinance 77, Section 19.401, Fences in Residential and Park Districts, as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments before you read?
Before we vote?
Comments.
Any from the council? Go ahead, ma'am, you can step up. Okay, you came just in time. You made it by thirty-five seconds. Please tell me your name.
My name is Jody Esper, I live at 363 Shoreline, okay? And I have some photos as well, but they're on the phone, so if you'd like to see them, kinda makes it easier.
Are they pictures of the fence?
Yes.
Oh, nevermind.
Okay, so basically, when there was a fence that was gonna be put up by the pool, I've owned my property for like twelve years, and so I did come and try to look and excavate everything, it looks kind of at an angle toward the golf course, and so at first, when they were gonna put up a fence, they started putting up six-foot fence on the right side of my property, but it didn't have a permit, so there's a long story, I actually went to the city because they were not gonna tell the people that they actually were putting up the wrong-sized fence, and I told them that they needed to do it right away, and I contacted the city manager because they were saying, well, they'll just have to be charged twice, and I was like, no, you're gonna tell them right now, and the only reason why I'm giving this story is cause I see my neighbor over there, but I actually interceded to make sure that he didn't get charged two times for the fence, cause they started putting up at six feet. So at first I was like, six feet is allowed, correct? And they're like, no, no, it's five feet, and I'm like, well, you better tell somebody so that they don't have to rebuild it, because the guy that was the contractor that was working with them said they were just gonna bill them a second time, and I said, no, you're not billing them a second time, you need to go down to the city and double-check the permits and all of that. So hopefully that saved them some money. The other thing is, is that they were kind enough to build the fence so that it goes straight, because I have a berm in the back, cause I did notice in your bill that it does have where you have to build, so it's, if it's on a berm, it's four feet, so that's kind of a good part of the bill, but at six feet, when I sit there, I just realized that it would have made my view, because I look, kind of look over the golf course, and I don't have anybody else behind, and that's one of the reasons why I bought there, and I own all the property down, but it just kind of ruins, at six feet, it kind of ruins the total view, but at five feet, I understand, because you don't want somebody kind of looking into your pool, right? But I have a bedroom window that faces here, and then there's the fence here, and so my idea is that people, if you're gonna build a six fence, you need to get coordinated with your neighbor to find out, you know, if they would approve that. Also, for instance, I would approve like a graduated fence.
Ma'am, that means your time's up, you get three minutes.
A graduated fence like this.
Thank you, we understand.
Would be much better, so that by the time it gets to the view, it's not bad, but it does block where the bedroom would look.
Got it.
Just so I understand.
Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you.
So I'm trying to be, I don't believe in the, like, solid six-foot fence, I think it should, you have to work with your neighbor to get, or like, get a garden fencing at the top, see what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, new business, let me get to new business real fast. Okay, item number six, A, Members of the Bond Committee presented information on the upcoming bond referendum during the February 20th council meeting. Council directed staff to bring the resolution back in support for referendum. I have already issued a proclamation in support of it, and the resolution mirrors that proclamation. Let me read the proclamation real fast. Whereas the City of TK supports, strongly supports the public education and recognizes the importance of public schools, and whereas the City of TK acknowledges the Fort Mill School District's success in building a reputation and providing outstanding academic opportunities for its students, and whereas the Fort Mill School Board unanimously approved a referendum for March 20th, 2018, to provide Fort Mill and TK area residents an opportunity to vote on the issuance of 190 million in general obligation bonds to address facility-related needs resulting from this area's growth, and whereas the bond funds would be utilized to address vital facility needs, including a new middle school, two new elementary schools, technology improvements, land for future school sites, major facility maintenance, and new businesses, and new buses, and whereas the City of TK supports the school district objectives of continually improving facilities and upgrading technology to assist in properly preparing the future, future workforce, remaining attractive to newcomers associated with new businesses moving to the area, and addresses the contemporary needs of students, children, and a well, and a well-educated community. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of TK, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled, supports the Fort Mill School District's plan and the passage of 2018 school bond referendum. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution supporting the Fort Mill School District's bond referendum.
I have a motion on resolution supporting the school bond, Fort Mill School Districts. Do I have a?
Second.
Second, all, any, any other comments from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Item number six, B, Resolution Supporting Law Enforcement Assistance and Support Agreement. Item number six, B. Resolution supporting law enforcement assistance and support agreement. This is a duplicate agreement to the city of Rock Hill, town of Fort Mill, and town of Clover, have already approved and entered into with, entered with, into with York County. City of York is considering the same time you'll be, same time will be. Is considering it at the same time you will be. Briefly, it is a mutual aid agreement between all law enforcement agencies in York County, including the sheriff's office. It allows for each entity to assist the other entities on a case-by-case basis to perform public safety functions. Primarily, it would be used in cases of major emergency or regional special events, where the entity whose jurisdiction the event is in can request and receive additional help from surrounding jurisdictions. In those instances, the offices, officers of the assisting agency would have the same authorities as if they were in their home jurisdiction. It does not require other agencies to send officers, but does provide them with jurisdiction if they are sent. Hope that was clear enough. All right, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the law enforcement assistance and support agreement.
I have a resolution to, to support the law enforcement assistance and support agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Any comments from the audience? Hearing none? To vote, all in favor, say?
Questions?
You have any questions?
I do.
Oh, you do, okay.
I do. I do have a few questions about this, just so I can get a better understanding of the impact. And so, yeah, chief, if you don't mind coming up. So, just so I get a better understanding, is this something that's new, or is this the way we currently operate? Or is this an annual agreement that we enter into?
So, the law changed about a year and a half ago, and we also had a new sheriff. We've been working with attorneys from Spencer &amp; Spencer through Rock Hill and York County Sheriff's Department's attorneys to come up with a new resolution that made sure we covered some more things that weren't covered in the past resolution, like if somebody had a riot in their jurisdiction, they could call us for assistance. Those things were not covered in the past resolution. With the new changes in the law and the new resolution, they're now covered. And York is doing their vote tonight, and Fort Mill, Rock Hill, and Clover have already passed, as well as the sheriff's department.
Mayor, may I continue with questions?
Oh.
Okay, thank, thank you. That's helpful, too. And then my other question, do you have any idea about what the projected fiscal impact would be from this? And/or, and I guess I should say, are the expenses that our officers or the city would incur by supporting other jurisdictions reimbursed by that municipality?
So, we would not, in this situation, there would be emergency, case-by-case situation. We would not charge another agency, just as York County SWAT team has come in and assisted us. We would not charge them if they came in and assisted our jurisdiction, just as well as they would not charge us if we went out. And if it was a long term, then you're talking about calling the National Guard, the State Guard. It's a different agreement. This is more for an immediate crisis, like an active shooter. And those, this, that's where this agreement comes into play. Does that answer?
Yeah, no, I think that's helpful.
Physical impact.
That's helpful. And, and I would just say, I am supportive, but I just want to make sure that I'm very clear on what the impact is. And then lastly, are there any safety concerns in terms of our officers going into areas that they might not be as familiar with in having this right or authority at that point to respond? Do you have any concerns, or you think that we're good, we're, we're fine?
We train, we train the same as everybody else in the state. And just as when the four officers were shot a month ago, over a month ago, we assisted York County with their calls for service to make sure that they were able to respond to that, and that gives us the ability, no problem whatsoever as far as us being in. Obviously, we're not just going to go out there and do something to just go out outside of our jurisdiction. So, it's only going to be in a major, major situation, and they're going to be supervised as well. So, they won't just be out there in a certain area without any type of supervision.
Okay. Thank you, chief. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
All right, let me just read, more reading tonight. Read the resolution approving law enforcement assistance and support agreements. Whereas South Carolina code twenty-three dash twenty dash ten authorizes mutual aid agreements on behalf of law enforcement authorities for the purpose of providing the proper and prudent exercise of public safety functions. Whereas law enforcement authorities for the entities described herein and the city of T A K Police Department desire to participate in such agreements for the purposes of securing the benefits of mutual aid for requested public safety function. Whereas it is the desire and intent to pursue their joint undertaking for the provision of mutual aid and assistance by the assignment of officers and agents between jurisdictions for requested public safety functions to the fullest extent as it is allowed by law. And whereas T A K council must approve the mutual aid agreements and does so now for the purpose of satisfying statutory requirements. Now therefore, be advised, be resolved that the city council and the city of T A K do hereby approve the law enforcement assistance and support agreements for each of the York County Sheriff's Office, town of Fort Mill, city of Rock Hill, city of York, town of Clover, attached and included herof by reference and authorities, the chief of police, to execute such agreements with this agency. Adopted this nineteenth day of March, twenty eighteen, if we so approve. All approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right, let's read on. We are on item number six, D. Correct, city manager? Six what? D is in David.
C is in Charlie.
C is in cat. Okay, approval of reduction of escrow. There you go. All right. You guys got to speak up. My hearing's not so good. I'm not as young as I used to be. Okay, the original performance, this is the approval of reduction of escrow account and performance labor, labor and materials agreement for River Lakes Phase Three. The original performance labor and materials agreement and the bank escrow amount in the amount of forty-two thousand one hundred seventy-five was approved by the city council on January ninth, two thousand twelve. The escrow funds were for the installation of twenty-one hundred linear feet of four-foot sidewalks within the development. A previous request reduced the escrow amount by thirty-three thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents, leaving a balance of eight thousand nine hundred and six dollars and fifty cents. The city operations director and the city engineer have inspected the work that was previously bounded, bonded, and have certified that only a remainder of the two hundred and thirty-three linear feet of four-foot sidewalks has not been completed. The city engineer has approved the escrow reduction of six thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents by using the same unit prices as provided by Mr. Steele in December of two thousand eleven, and applying the two-point-two-five multiplier, thereby determining that the new value of the amount that is left to be bonded is two thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Clear as mud. Any questions?
I have a question.
You have a question?
I have a question, and, and this question goes to the, I guess, the city manager, maybe. In regards to the two-point-two-five multiplier, how is that determined?
It's a one-point-two-five multiplier. That's a typo.
Okay. And then, still, same thing applies then, because?
It's under state code, is where that comes from.
It's, okay. Is there, does state code require us to do, to use the same unit prices as the year that the contract is signed?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. But as you will see, there's, the long and short of this is everything's been installed but two hundred and thirty-three feet, and our engineer agrees with their engineer that the remaining balance that would be left in the escrow after this reduction is enough to cover that, should we need to. That's, that's what the escrow money's there for, in case the developer builder pulls up stakes, splits town, and there's still work left to be done. The remaining pri, the remaining, remaining amount left in escrow is, is enough to cover it. At the end of the day, yeah, all goes according to plan. They finished the work, and we're back for a final one here in another month or so to release the remaining escrow funds back to them, because all work would have been, would have been completed at that point. Are you satisfied?
Yes, thank you.
Do I have any questions in the audience? Hearing none? All intended motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve the reduction of escrow amount, account, and performance labor and materials agreement for River Lakes Phase Three. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. All in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Now, six D. As in David. Okay, six D. Proposed, proposal for study necessary to charge and collect impact fees on the new construction in T A K. This would be interesting. York County selected Tishler Bice to conduct the necessary study in order to allow the county to begin charging impact fees on new home permits. As you're aware, the Fort Mill School District is also looking to increase their impact fees and joined in on the county's study with the county's consultant. The county has also agreed to allow us to participate in their study so that we can begin charging impact fees as well. We will have to pay our share of the study, which should be much less than the county's portion, and since they are already doing the study, it should save us money doing it at this time. The consultant is sending the city manager the scope of work and costs by Friday, March sixteenth. Once staff receives the information, it will be sent electronically to council, and hard copies will be at the dais for the meeting. Now, what this is, is we've been experiencing a tremendous amount of growth, as you all are aware. And this is just a way for the people who move here, they're going to pay an impact fee so that the rest of us who are to live here don't have to keep buying, like, we got the school bond coming up. It's like the new people moving in to help pay for schools that we don't keep having to pay for all these schools. They get to pay their fair share for the fire department that we just built, the police station that we're about to build, the water tower, parks and recreation, things like that, instead of straining the resources that we already have in our tax budget.
And the developers are going to be thanked.
Right, the developers, right. Do I have any questions from council, or any comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, currently, this is set at about forty-two and change for the study to take part. Is that correct, Harley?
Yes, and that's, that's what, I guess, really, staff needs two things from council this evening. One would be direction that you do or do not want to begin charging impact fees. And the second, authorizing us to move forward with Tishler Bice. As you, as was presented to you Friday, when I got the, the scope from, from the consultant, it's forty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. As that is an unbudgeted item, whether council funds it through, if, if council chooses to fund it, whether you fund it through your current fiscal year's operational contingency, or to draw it from reserves. It's, financially, it's fine either way, whichever, whichever way council wants to move forward with it. So, that, that would be, if council wants to move forward at this time, that's, that's what, the direction that we need. But yeah, the, the total amount is forty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay. And currently, if we were to pull this from reserves, we have two-point-six million in reserves, so it would be about one-point-six percent of our reserves, if that, if we pulled the four, total of the forty-two K. Two, two questions, if I may. So, this study is required by the state in order for us to be able to charge impact fees. My question is, was this, could we have done this sooner? Knowing that we have the growth that we've already had in the last several years, I feel like we're, essentially, we left a lot of money on the table, I guess, is, is my thought process.
There, there is a, a section in the state statutes. It's under six dash one dash, I believe it's nine thirty, in the state statute that, that says that, one, in order to do impact fees, and what, if council is in favor of this tonight, we'll bring it to you at your April meeting. Council has to adopt a resolution directing the planning commission to conduct said study. I don't know of anybody that is just using their planning commission members to put together this type of study. Usually, that is then pushed over to a, a consultant firm who works with the planning commission, puts together stakeholder group meetings, things of that nature, and then a recommendation would come back to city council via the planning commission with a recommendation to adopt an ordinance with the specified fees. But the study must be done so that it prevents municipalities, counties, from just arbitrary, arbitrarily just saying, hey, we're going to charge eighteen thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, yeah, on impact fees for every new doorstep. It's got to be set towards, there are specific things in the code that it can pay for. So, it has to fund those things. It can only fund those things. It is for, as specified in the code, for a period of time. So, there's, I have spent a lot of time reading this section of the code since last week. And it's, it is very, very precise, whereas I would say there, there are other things that may be less precise. This one is pretty, pretty particular in it. Could we have done this earlier? Possibly, yeah. I mean, if that was the direction that count, prior councils wanted to go in, sure. I know back in two thousand and six, Somerville did it as a city. They were challenged, actually, in court because theirs wasn't just project-based, it also had some consumption base to it. And the courts upheld their impact fees and moved forward. So, the date on this statute, sorry, I don't have that with me, but I would say that, yeah, I guess we could have gone all the way back to then, but most certainly over the last, yeah, three, five, eight years, for certain.
And then my only other question slash, I guess I just want to put it out there. I feel like this is going to help to fund a lot of the capital projects that we have coming up, and so, it's something that I, I will be supporting. The only thing that I would say is that when we, we can't fund, take the money that we're taking out of reserves and putting it back in from the impact fees, but I want to make sure that we, when we continue to look at things and we have to pull money from reserves for things like this, that we're looking to replenish those, to make sure that we continually have that money in reserves and we don't just, you know, keep taking from the, from the pony there. That was my only comment. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes.
Hold on.
My question is, is as well around budgeting for this, or, or I guess we haven't budgeted for it, so that's why I said. Do we not anticipate having any additional contingencies in our operating budget or additional revenues that we didn't initially project that could cover this versus going into our reserve?
Well, and that's why I said if, if council wants to, to use current year's operational contingencies, very, very easily done. Currently, compared to this time last year, fiscal year, you're about three hundred and forty thousand ahead on revenues. Expenditures are trending right where they should be. Some are actually even trending a little bit under where they would be this time this year. There's also two decent-sized revenue streams that'll be coming in that we did not budget any revenues from, and that's Wind Haven and River Falls. You're going to see revenues coming in from them, at least on your development fees, not on your building inspection fees, but on your zoning fees, land disturbance permies, plan review fees, things of that nature, coming in probably midsummer, to where they're going to, they're getting, those projects are going to get active. So, those are additional revenues that we had not planned on. Obviously, we have worked to capitalize on some savings in our group insurance plans that will realize through the course of this fiscal year. So, again, whether you're pulling it from operational contingencies or saying, you know, we want to pull it from reserves, it really ends up being six, one half dozen the other, because what's not spent out of our operational contingencies goes into our reserves at the end of the year. So, we budgeted this year to put a hundred and fifty thousand out of, from operational contingency into reserve, and I think you're going to, you're going to put that and then some over to reserves by the end of this fiscal year, even with this expense, the way things are trending almost midway through the fiscal year.
So, what you're saying is we don't have to tap into our reserves. We can just fund this?
You can fund, you, we can put it as an expense item in your fiscal year as a new line item and, and expense it there. Yes, ma'am.
And then we don't have to worry about refilling, I mean, I know that at the end of the year.
Anyway.
Right.
But.
Correct.
I would just be more in favor of.
That's fine.
Not having to use any additional, either reserve or. Go ahead and use any additional, either reserve or contingencies.
Your operational contingency? Sure.
Or additional revenues that have come in. And then, in terms of the study in general, what specific services will they be evaluating?
They're gonna look at our entire comprehensive, excuse me, not comprehensive plan, our capital improvements plan that is already, was adopted by council two years ago. They're gonna, they're gonna start there. Now, the conversation that I had with the principal of the consulting firm, Carson Bice, it was a very brief conversation, just so he could begin working on a scope to get it to us in time, was centered around Catawba Park, Police Station, Windhaven Park, New Water Tower. Those were the four big-ticket items right off the, right off the cuff. There is an opportunity under, under impact fees where we could actually get some debt recovery on the debt we have on the new fire station that was just opened last year. There's also an opportunity for equipment slash vehicles under the code, but they have to cost more than a hundred thousand, they gotta be a hundred thousand dollars or more. So, a new, larger ladder truck, so that, you know, as Game On does their hotel, as Game On does their facility, we're gonna need a bigger ladder truck, impact fees could go to that, but not fund a patrol car, you know, or a maintenance truck. You know, the code does cap it at no less than a hundred thousand dollars, so you can get some equipment in there. There's, some cities will do roads, if they've got existing roads that need to be widened, things of that nature. We don't, I really don't think we have an opportunity on roads with impact fees here, mainly because as developers, developers are paying to build the roads, so if we were to charge them an impact fee for the roads they're building, basically, their impact, their impact fees on that portion, they're gonna get a credit for, because they paid their portion of, the way the code reads. All your other roads are really state roads. Yeah, if Gardendale Road and Dam Road and New Gray Rock Road were actually city-owned roads, those absolutely, I would say we go after, you know, try to include as part of the impact fees. But those are all state-owned and maintained roads, like T G K Drive, Gold Hill Road, things like that, so. Don't know that there's an opportunity on roads, I know Fort Mill, when they did theirs a couple of years ago, did include roads on, really on our utilities. We overdesigned when the new facilities were being installed, as far as the sewer line to Rock Hill, things of that nature. So, we've got capacity there. Yeah, but again, we'll be looking at the entire CIP that the city has, updating it as part of this process, because that's another mandatory component. You gotta have a comprehensive plan, and you gotta have a capital improvements plan. You gotta be a city or a county, and if you don't have those things, you're not even eligible to do the, to, to even go after development impact fees under the code. If that makes sense.
Thanks, yeah, I just wanna make sure that whatever the scope is of work, that it's comprehensive
Yes, ma'am.
and includes everything, and so that we're not, they're not
We definitely don't wanna limit ourselves, no doubt about it. Yes, ma'am. Ryan, do you have anything? So Charlie, right now, the city of Fort Mill, they do a recreational impact fee? Correct. A police impact fee? I'm not sure what, I know they had parks and rec, I know they had water and sewer, and I know they had fire, and I know they had roads. I don't know if they had police, but I would imagine they did because it was eligible for it. Just not a hundred percent certain on that. So we really would be just following in, in the footsteps of More or less, yes. So we're not inventing new ground or anything, this is just Correct. Go ahead.
So would this allow us to, the impact fees would allow us to invest in our trail system? And does, and I guess with, with any of the capital improvements that would, that the funding would be used for, does it have to specifically be in the area of the new development?
No.
Okay.
It does not necessarily have to be in the area of the new development, as long as the new development is getting a benefit from the facility or service that, that the impact fee is paying for. From, from a trail standpoint, potentially, because it says parks and recreational facilities, and it, there's a comma after the parks, not a and, so, yeah, in the way the code reads, so potentially, you know, trails. But that's, that's something we could definitely vet out with the, with the consultant as we bring them on board, provided council greenlights it this evening. Any more council comments? And Mayor, if I can, again, we will be bringing the required resolution to council at your April meeting, if, if it's approved this evening. Okay, any other questions? Ma'am, would you like to step up? Do you have also some comment? State your name and address again?
Jody Esper, three-six-three Shoreline.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I am for the impact fees. My taxes have gone up about three hundred dollars every single year. So, it will probably be over four thousand dollars once the, if the bond referendum is passed, because the average house in Lake Shore is probably gonna have an increase of about two hundred dollars with the bond referendum, and then, we also have the five-year valuation that's coming up, and once that happens, the taxes will increase even further, so my question about the bond ref, the impact fees is how are they gonna, the person that was presenting the bond referendum said that they were gonna take the impact fees and, and apply it to there after the bond referendum is passed, and I was wondering, I want, before I vote for that, I wanna make sure that those impact fees are going to be applied to that, and my point is, how do they link them legally? Because, is it gonna be on the bill that's set forth tomorrow for the vote? Or is it something that has to be voted on after you do the?
I mean, specifically, you sound like you're asking a school board question.
Well, I was, I'm just trying to figure out about this, for tomorrow, for the vote. They kept saying that they're gonna link them, but is that, is there any way to link the impact fee that you know of to the bond referendum as of now, as of today?
I, I don't know, it's, that's a school board issue, I don't know, anybody wanna tackle that?
I think their focus was, I mean, there's nothing There's nothing they're gonna put in black and white that says if impact fees come through at X amount, that it's gonna cover that tax increase, but I think it's more of a budgeting type straightforward.
I'm not sure how it works on the school district end with impact fees, I know for us, we have to state, here are the things that we're going to do, and here's what the fee is, and those fees can only be spent on those things.
Like building schools.
Right, but we're, we're doing it by ordinance. School, school boards don't adopt laws in ordinance, so how impact fees work for school districts, that's, Mayor, you hit it on the head, that, that is absolutely a question for school board, not, not for, for us.
So as presented to me, it's not really connected as of right now, right?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, so that, we have to say, okay, how is it gonna affect our taxes in our community? And what kind of benefits are we gonna get it, get overall?
Well, I hate to go on record, but I think they said that it's gonna be for debt reduction, right? For future construction and for debt reduction, or just for future
Citizen Bond Committee presented
They were here last month and gave this
For building, and for buying new property and new land, because they
And schools, correct.
It's gonna increase over time.
Right. Thank you.
Still not up, I'm up in the air about that.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Kathy Masters, four oh seven two, point clear. Does the
Nope, you're done, sorry, thanks for coming. It's been fun.
I was just trying to run down the other couple of segments. Does this affect current, current approved developments that already have their plans laid out, their budgets set? Are they gonna be surprised by?
The, the impact fee would be applicable to all structures that have not pulled a building permit as of the time that the ordinance is enacted. But there will be a public hearing, there will be stakeholder meetings all through this process. They'll, they'll know before it, the ordinance is, is being, is before council.
Three developers who already have agreements and layouts and everything.
They, they've still got their vested rights. That, that part of it doesn't change, but yes.
I was just curious, because there, we have a lot on the table, and I didn't want to find out that these guys were exempt. New developments after these, because we're really not gonna have any.
I, I, I think I gave a, for instance, and may have been with staff as we were having this conversation, I think there's maybe fifteen homes left in Lakewood to be built, and then they'll be completed. If, you know, come the end of the summer, if there's ten homes left in Lakewood, even though, they were even under a development agreement, when they pulled a, when they pull a building permit, that, they'll, they'll have to, they'll have to pay that impact fee, even for a development that's ten-plus years old. The builder would have to pay it, either, and this is something that we'll have to address in the ordinance, it'll either be paid at the time the building permit is pulled, or prior to CO, depending on how it's built into the ordinance. Thank you, Kathy. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Point of order. So, the motion that's written here, at least on my packet, doesn't have the dollar amount, and it also
He said forty-three thousand.
Okay, forty-three, and it also references city reserve funds, so I don't know where every, anyone else stands.
You do not have to read the motion that's there, those are just kind of a guide, if you choose. You can make the motion however you choose, we'll record it however it's made.
I, I guess my question is, you're, you're fine with?
Yeah, as stated.
Okay.
Usually covers.
Motion to authorize, motion to authorize the City Manager to execute all necessary document, documents in order for the city to participate in the study necessary to charge impact fees and expend no more than forty-three thousand dollars from the city's operating fund for the scope of work presented and made as part of the record.
I have a motion, I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second, by Heather, any other comments? All in favor of this signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Item number seven, the City Manager's report. Charlie Fundenberg. Very briefly, we're looking forward to some great weather at the end of the week. We've got our seventh annual Mayor's Cup, it'll be this Friday, eleven-thirty shotgun start. So, and we've got a bigger field this year than we did last year, so looking forward to seeing everybody, all our golfers out for that. As a reminder, Fort Mill Schools will be out the week of April second for spring, for spring break. Please be cautious around the crosswalks and parks as you're driving around, you're gonna see a lot of, a lot of our youth running around. As part of that, City Hall will be closed on Friday, March thirtieth. It is a holiday for us, we're on Good Friday. Council, just as a reminder to y'all, and we'll get, make sure that the web link is emailed to you. Statement of economic interest forms are due on March thirtieth by noon. Everybody's gotta file those. If you've got questions, and this probably more for the three that just ran campaigns, Mayor and Heather and Alicia. I know y'all's gets a little bit trickier with your, your campaign funds and things like that, I think it gets easier after that. But if you've got, if you need help, definitely reach out, we'll try to help you. The folks at the economic, down at the Ethics Commission are very helpful as well. March thirty-first, Lions Club will be hosting their annual Easter egg con at Runney Park. They'll begin at eleven o'clock, if you show up at eleven-ten, you're probably gonna miss it, it goes pretty fast, so. Thank you to the Lions Club for doing that annual event for us. TK Police Department just received a, a grant for a camp cadet from Walmart for twenty-five hundred dollars. Good job to those guys, and congratulations on that. And last, council, we put some event calendar magnets up there at your seats. We've got some We have some out at the table, for those that are here with us tonight, wanna pick one up. It's got all of our events throughout the year, pretty handy little item you can throw in the refrigerator. And thank you to Piedmont again for choosing to be our title sponsor and helping us with that. And last thing I have is a happy Easter to everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight, county, county, city council comments, I think I'm on county now, elevated. Ryan, do you have anything to say?
Sure, I'll just be real quick, just the school bond referendum. You know, it's a big-ticket item, I hear a lot of back and forth on social media and Twitter on this or that, and it's not my duty to pay for other people's kids, and that, for me personally, as a member of this community, for something that could possibly cost your average home less than thirty cents a day to build schools for our future generations and our children, I, in my personal opinion, I think it's a no-brainer. We're doing the right thing, it wasn't our fault that everything grew so fast. We did our best to put the brakes on that and change the progress and how fast the city was growing, but right now, we have to deal with the cards that we've been dealt, or play with the cards that we've been dealt, and I just feel it's a necessary step in order to ensure that our children are taken care of. You know, it's not anything that I'm gonna reap the benefits of, I have, my son has four years left before he's out, so. Well, we're not gonna get to utilize it, you guys got little ones, though, you will. I just hope you guys would look at it, give it a chance, and sacrifice the less than thirty cents a day it takes to help contribute to our future generations. That's it.
And you're planning to have more kids, aren't you? Just checking, Alicia?
Just a reminder, get out there and vote tomorrow, make a plan, make sure you do it. Polls are open from seven a.m., seven p.m.
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven.
Heather?
Yep, me too. So, bond referendum, I will be voting yes as well, I would encourage you all to do the same if you can, and we have a seat to fill here, so we got some great candidates on the ballot tomorrow in TK, so let's finalize our council so we can do some great things together.
Thank you, next month, we won't have an empty seat over there, we'll have our new council person there, whether it be a he, we have two he's and a one she, so please get out, polls are open seven to seven, and exercise your civic duty. And with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So Mayor, make a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion for adjournment, I have a second, Heather, second by Alicia. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't think we've ever had a no on adjournment.